I'll go ahead and call this morning's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order. The first item on the agenda this morning is an approval of the agenda. A motion offered from Commissioner Gross to approve the agenda.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens in the audience wishing to address the board on anything that is not on the agenda? Mr. Larson, have you had any correspondence in regards to this?
I have not, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda this morning is an approval of the payment of bills and vouchers.
Move for approval.
A motion from Commissioner Ebinger to approve the payment of bills and vouchers.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. The minutes from the September 6th, 2022 Commissioner meeting are in the packet. A motion from Commissioner Gross to approve.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Next item today is a recognition of several donations to the Sheriff's Office for the DARE program. We'd like to thank Dallin and Diane Rasmussen for their donation given in honor of Sheriff Bill Berquist to the DARE account. And another in, from Delino and Liberta Pollock, a donation that was also given in honor of Sheriff Bill Berquist to that DARE account. Certainly so grateful for the generosity of these individuals to help support a vitally important program in Clay County. Item two this morning is a request of approval to replace unit heaters at the highway joint facility. We have our county engineer, Justin Sorem, with us this morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
Joe Olson is also joining you.
So I'm here this morning to seek approval for the replacement of unit heaters throughout the joint facility. This was identified as a need through the joint facility meetings, as many of the heaters have needed extensive repairs over the last few winters. They are 20 years old and parts are getting harder to find. So there are nine heaters throughout warm storage and the repair shop. We received two quotes for this project and we'd like to move forward with the low quote from Valley Service. The total price would be $77,385 and Clay County's share of this is 45% and that would be $34,823.25. And we do have money in our budget in 10-340-6301.
Will that amount leave some still in the account 6301?
Yes.
Move for approval.
A motion to approve the request from Commissioner Ebinger.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Kaylee. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item three today is a request to fill vacancies for two LPN positions in the detox facility. Public Health Director Kathy McKay and our detox director Troy Amundson. Good morning to you both.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. We are here today to request to fill two recent resignations for our LPN positions. These positions are needed for reimbursement for MA for our withdrawal management program. Without these positions, we cannot bill medical assistance.
Both budgeted for 22 and 23.
That's correct.
Anything, any questions from the board?
I have.
Yes, Commissioner Ebinger.
Do you have potential employees for these positions or will this be advertised?
I do not. They will be advertised.
Have you had difficulty filling these spots?
At times, yes.
Some of the things that I think Commissioner Kaylee can speak to it, but some of the things we've discussed in legislative meetings last week involved no reciprocity with North Dakota. Your positions would require Minnesota licensure.
Yes.
And also the, it's difficult to get people in these positions anywhere, but that and do these people have to pass a background check?
Yes, they do with Department of Human Services.
So that's a matter of months, isn't it?
I've got one that were going on three to four weeks, but usually it's been a little quicker than that.
Okay. That's all I've got.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve. Oh, excuse me.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion offered from Commissioner Gross, a second from Commissioner Kaylee with a follow-up question from Commissioner Kaylee.
I just wanted to echo what Commissioner Ebinger said. Yes, the DHS background studies and Minnesota not being a nursing compact state were items that I pushed strongly for in the Health and Human Services Policy Committee. And I think a lot of counties that aren't necessarily on a border didn't realize the magnitude of those issues. So we'll see what happens, but.
Appreciate that.
Definitely important and I hope you get good candidates soon and can fill those. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Any questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kathy, do you want to quick do a flu shot booster? Do you have any dates for us or places you could direct people to go to find that information?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. We do have the new booster. Those are available. We are still continuing our Wednesday COVID clinics. You also can get a flu shot at the same time as the COVID vaccine. So we have flu shots available as well. They're advertised on our website, on our Facebook page, and we did send those out to all the media outlets and the radio stations. So we have those available Wednesdays are our vaccine days in the Family Service Center building, in our clinic. And we also have a state-run vaccination site. It's at the same place as the testing site, the vault testing site. So we have that advertised as well and there was a press release sent out for that. So they're providing the booster vaccine and also primary series for the Pfizer doses. And they will be operational on Fridays and Saturdays. So there's other opportunities besides the Wednesday to get those vaccines. So we feel like that will really help get the vaccines out to our citizens.
Thank you so much for that.
Are you going to give us shots at board again this year, flu shots, or?
We sure can. Haven't had a request yet, so we're happy to do that if you're interested.
We'll see who has already had it, though. I mean.
All right.
Thank you.
All right.
Next item this morning is the committee reports. Commissioner Kaylee, would you like to start?
Last week we had more substance abuse crisis center construction manager interviews. We all participated in those. Tuesday evening, I attended the Morehead Planning Commission meeting. Just two items on that. There was a request for consideration of preliminary and final plat for the Horizon Shores daycare addition and strip center addition. Excited to see some development in that area. No citizen comments. Looks like a good project over there. And then the other item was just an update and that was on a municipal code text amendment for natural lawns in the city of Morehead. So there were some text changes for folks that are interested in having natural lawns. There was kind of a cumbersome process to apply for that. And so these changes should make it a little easier for folks that are interested in using their lawn spaces with more native plantings and still following good maintenance guidelines as well. And there's still a pretty clear process for reporting a property that is not being upkept and is full of noxious weeds and things as well. So that was that one. Then on Wednesday morning, we had an extension committee meeting, great updates from our master gardeners and Randy in horticulture, Rosie who is working with health and nutrition. We had a long discussion too about the fair and how that went this year and some possible changes in procedure moving forward to make things more smooth next year. There's going to be some ongoing discussion with the fair board on some of those items. Then Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, I attended the Association of Minnesota Counties Fall Policy Conference. As I mentioned a little bit earlier, in this meeting, my policy committee is Health and Human Services. I worked with Rhonda and Kathy ahead of time to have a really good list on what we need to hit strongly for our county and as far as priorities go in Health and Human Services. Some of the items we touched on a little bit earlier, but others included daycare and mental health services, building out that bed capacity and outstate to serve our folks closer to home. I feel like that went pretty well. We'll see how those platform items shake out and we'll be voting on those at our regional meetings coming up later this fall. We also had sessions at that AMC conference about property assessment and valuation and the impact that that can have on property taxes. That was really interesting. And then another session on election security and all of the different steps and layers of security through that process for the different types of voting, absentee, early, service members, et cetera. So those were good sessions and I'm sure both Commissioner Gross and Commissioner Ebinger were there as well. They might have additional items to add. Then yesterday, I attended our Clay County Law Library Board meeting. The legal self-help clinic has been going really well. In fact, we're looking at adding additional hours just because usage of that service is up. We also looked at our budget and we're continuing to go through the resources that we subscribe to and add to that library to see what is actually being used and seeing where we can cut to save some money in that budget there so that we're not filling a library full of resources that we don't need since there is such great access virtually through a database that we have as well. And that concludes my reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaylee. Commissioner Gross.
Tuesday, we had the Highway Tracking Meeting and we finally got Century Link, we're working with them, moving their phone lines, and I think we finally got that completed last week. That's been going on for about probably two years. I don't know what it is. It's held up the completion of County State 8 Highway 1. We went over the five-year plan. It looks like we're going to have to move some projects over back one year because of the fact that there's not going to be money available. So we're going over that highway plan, five-year plan and realigning it a little bit. Talked about the shops that are being put up Georgetown. It's moving along okay. Yulin, we started to work on that when the polls were set in September. Comstock, we had some oil leaks there. So there was a tank they found there, I guess, and that had to be cleared up first. They're starting construction on the cold storage shops out there at the Highway Department and the salt and we'll begin to work on that this month. The box culverts that we're supposed to do this year are going to be moved to next spring as the Lindon Turn project that we were supposed to be working on and didn't get any bits on that yet, so going to advertise it again later this month.
Commissioner Gross, because of the delay in the box culverts, I think it's a shipment issue, right? Can we make sure we're coordinating with township officials? I've had a few calls from them on those box culverts being replaced and let's just be clear that the reason they're being pushed is because of a supply issue.
Okay.
I know Mark Cart was particularly concerned about one. Thank you.
On this, we've got some open positions, assistant engineers, maintenance workers, variable hour plow drivers. There's several positions open in the Highway Department, so someone's looking for work, put in your application. Looking for help. Tuesday afternoon, we had the interviews for instructions, which we'll be working on next week, picking a construction engineer for the detox center. Then Wednesday afternoon, went down to the Minnesota Rural Caucus meeting. Update first was given on, excuse me, wrong sheet. Ben Winchester from the University of Minnesota gave us an update on housing. He was saying that most of the property are houses in rural areas, or he said 70% of the houses in the rural areas are being lived in by old senior citizens. Put that nicely, I guess. I mean, there's two people in a big house and that's pretty much where the housing is at. Another thing he suggested that we change our classification or permits to allow two houses on one section where a younger, the children can build a house and live with their parents, you know, and have their own housing and to allow that permit to be changed. Thursday, we had a session on para. There was three different para updates they gave us for the general para, police para and the correctional plan. So there's three plans and he gave us updates on all them, how they're doing. One thing they brought up was the workers comp issue for people working from home. The person I was talking about was they have some people working from home, they live in Minnesota, they live in Wisconsin, and they were talking that we may have to look at those, are they covered on the workers comp plan if they work from home? The Minnesota one or the North Dakota one? Or Minnesota or Wisconsin? And they thought there may be a problem that people working from home. I don't know. We probably got that covered, but that'd be something we need to check out in our county to see whether we got people from North Dakota working from home in North Dakota. Too many notes over there. I think it was, I think AMC, I think it was one of the better meetings we had. I mean, there was a lot of stuff to cover. They covered a lot of good stuff. The only comment I would have is that they covered so much stuff and they didn't give us a, I don't know, papers or what they were talking about. They talked, they talked fast and they covered a lot of stuff and it was a good session, but I wish there would have been more handouts or something like that and they gave some good information.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gross, I believe that some of those PowerPoints that they presented specifically on the tax assessment and the voting, I believe that they're going to send those out. And so if I get those, I'll make sure they get out to each of you.
Thank you.
I think that pretty much covers my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross. Commissioner Ebinger?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tuesday, I also participated in interviews for the contractors for the substance abuse crisis facility that we'll continue, do our follow-up next week and make our selection. Wednesday, later Tuesday, Wednesday and, no, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, I also attended the AMC Legislative Conference at Arrowood. During that time, I took two meetings remotely. On Wednesday, Northwest Emergency Communication Board Joint Meeting between the board and the RAC, discussed grants for individual PSAPs training. These grants are available. The training take place at the locations, which is good. It gives trainers an opportunity to make an assessment of the facility and gear the training towards that as well as makes it easier to schedule as many people as possible to get the training because you don't have to go to a different location. It's good for the small departments in particular. Looked at staffing issues. Some of the PSAPs are staffed or full staffed or close to full staffing. Others are trying to operate with as large a vacancy as 50%. And they're actually looking in some smaller departments to have to shut down their stat or their PSAP during certain shifts and transfer it over to another PSAP for handling emergency calls. And we got into the legislative issues that could help in that. A lot of that legislation went up last year and in that session and died like a lot of other things did. We had to approve a donation of an old 50-foot tower that's been disassembled and they're going to give it to amateur radio people. And we discussed meeting federal AES standards on encryption. That's going to be kind of pricey, but it's going to be a necessary thing that we do as we move forward. On Thursday, I remotely attended the Greater Fargo-Morehead EDC full board meeting. Had a presentation from Brad Arnold, Senior Vice President of AGCO. He talked about the purchase of a para and plans for local development here with that merger. Casey Steinbacher with the Chamber, or who's contracting with the Chamber, talked about fueling our future too. They've interviewed about 82% of the investors. Some of the feedback is they want to go beyond the simple grant funding operation. They've been told that there's a lot of people that want to see clarity in their strategy and show a plan to give specific information on return of investment. I think those are valid observations and I think they're intent on doing the work. We had a dashboard update. Again, the AMC Fall Legislative Conference, I attended the general session topics that have already been reported on, on election security, rising home values. We also had the gubernatorial candidates were invited to come make an address to the commissioners who were there. Governor Walz did not attend, however Lieutenant Governor Peggy Flanagan attended, as did Scott Jensen, the Republican candidate, and they made their presentation. NACO presented, gave us presentation on federal legislation that impacts counties to include the Inflation Reduction Act, ARPA, and the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. On the Public Safety Committee, I'm going to have to echo what the other two commissioners have said. We covered a massive amount of information. I sat down early this morning. I was going to do this from my notes and that wouldn't have been possible. And I tried to just cut it down to highlights because you guys don't want a 30-minute report from me. But we covered a lot of stuff. One of the critical issues we looked at is 911 Next Generation. And I'm going to cut through, Sandy Stroud from 911, the 911 Programs Coordinator for the state was there, gave a very good presentation. I'm going to cut through probably two hours' worth of information and just condense it to, we had this legislation up last year and it got shot down. Service providers of phone services have what's referred to as a tariff payment system. And when you call 911, your call is switched to the proper 911 center through those service That system will no longer be necessary and the funds from the tariff payments will go to local 911, local counties to provide 911 services and not to the carriers. Once we go to 911 New Generation Technology. We've got to go to 911 New Generation Technology for texting, for a lot of other things, to advance. We did not get with the service providers and lobby with them and talk to them in the last session. As a result, this got shot down pretty quickly and we're working at doing that now. One of the good and important things bear in mind is the new technology is going to have some pretty strong costs, but it's also going to direct more 911 funding to the counties on a permanent basis. So that's important. We got to readdress the 403 technology legislation, which updates Minnesota statute. The statute now reads to address technology of the 90s. And we've got to update that to meet the new 911. Another issue, we've got 911 and 988, the new suicide prevention lines. We've really hit a wall on that and as a result of the deadly force legislation that we had problems with maintaining our partnerships with North Dakota agencies last year. The courts took care of that. It was a Fifth Amendment issue. The courts addressed it. It's no longer a problem. But what we have right now is situations where law enforcement is discouraged from responding to any mental health crisis involving a weapon unless a crime's been, unless a crime has occurred. So if you have somebody in a mental health crisis who has a gun or a knife and they're in their own home, they've not broken the law. 988 wants to turn that over to law enforcement for obvious reasons, for least support if they have psychiatric response in the field. In many agencies, 911 will not respond to those until crimes occurred. Unfortunately, if you're talking about a knife or a gun, that could have serious consequences. So it's another secondary result of this legislation that hopefully can get hammered out, but it's presented a problem. The other big issue we discussed was corrections and probation. Minnesota has the eighth largest corrections and probation system in the country and it is 50th in state funding. We are the lowest. We pay less than, the state of Minnesota pays less into the system than Mississippi, my home state of Arkansas, a lot of states that are not seen as progressive states. The difference in this is that the counties pick up the tab. There are three different systems, Department of Corrections, CCA or CPO for each state or for each county. There's different combinations you can get to fund your probation workers. We do not, or we did have a solution for this and it was in legislation that died in the last session. And it had been working with other states through an entity that was supporting that and they put $125,000 into the efforts to research this and come up with answers. They came up with good answers. It never got out of legislature. So we're going to have to readdress that this year. But there needs to be more funding from the state through the Department of Corrections to underwrite these community corrections efforts. Commissioner Schnell was there from the State Department of Corrections. He addressed several things, but he heard the conversation on this. He had addressed some of the things that are going on within the DOC and not specifically these funding issues, but he is aware of them and he heard them. He did present, there were, there were some issues he talked about, one of which was picking up people on probation violation warrants. Those things had gotten about double what the normal numbers were and he worked with local agencies, or they have worked, the Department of Corrections, to do warrant sweeps. And then he indicated some of his staffing problems. A lot more happened, but I'll just, to get to the bottom line on this, we had to establish priorities and a lot, four of the five were priorities that we had last year that just didn't get through the legislation. One is going to be mental health for 911/988 responses and for resources in correctional facilities. And a couple of the people there cited Clay County as an example of what you should be doing. We can do more. We certainly don't have any assistance and funding on this to speak of, but there needs to be more correctional or more presence of mental health in the correctional facilities in our state, particularly in juvenile facilities. There's a huge lack there. The other priorities, community correction funding, again probation, source of funding for radio systems and New Generation 911, a stable revenue for rural fire and EMS. We are not in this county hugely, we don't have the issues a lot of northern Minnesota has. We're near metropolitan area, so part of our county is covered by resources from that. But some of these counties, you'll have four or five deep where they're relying on rural fire and rural EMS and there's no consistent source of funding for them. And then funding for social workers for 911-988 response and for correctional facilities. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross.
I just did one other item, when we were talking about assessments, we're aware that every five years we assess all the property in the county, and there's 60 different classifications the state of Minnesota has that you can be assessed in. The next nearest state in the United States has only 14 different classifications. So there's a big difference in doing classifications in Minnesota than in other states. Also, the houses have increased in the last year 17%. Clay County has been 10%. Apartments increased 9.3%. Agriculture increased 12.3%. Seasonal housing, 25%. Commercial was 2.7 and industrial 11.5. So there's been increases in every category almost, so there's going to be some tax increases this year because of just general increases in the state of Minnesota. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross. Commissioner Ebinger, was that everything? Last week, I also attended the construction manager interviews. We interviewed the final two construction firms on Tuesday after the follow-up of the one firm on Monday. We will be choosing likely next week during our board meeting. I also attended the Clay County Extension Committee meeting and good reports from staff on summer programming and certainly exciting to hear that there is a new office support position that will be starting at the beginning of October. I attended the MetroCog. Sorry. Is that for now?
No, just past.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. I attended the MetroCog Full Policy Board Meeting last week. Certainly had several different votes to approve different tip amendments and project reports based on what, what's going on. We did have some proposals into the wordage of the, now that, after the census, we are now moving into a TMA planning area. So there were some adjustments to the agreement there. And then talked a little bit about allocating for planning dollars in, similar to our five-year construction plan, doing planning dollars for projects to have ahead of the construction planning. The Heartland Trail is one that they've earmarked in there and will be coordinating with, with Steve and our probably highway department in regards to planning whatever the, the local 20% match would be on that if we choose to do that. And then adding in now that the underpass is complete in Moorhead, certainly they are pushing for the 11th Street component, so talking about adding that into the planning documents. And then yesterday, I attended the Solid Waste Construction Committee meeting in regards to the transfer station. Pretty good updates. Probably those agendas are a little slimmer than they used to be now that we're getting towards the end. I was having a discussion with the sheriff, so I missed the first 10, 10 minutes of that. So if I'm missing anything, Steve, feel free to update it. But just kind of small design coordination pieces. I know that as we get towards the end of building season, there's going to be some struggle to secure concrete and road materials. I'm very hopeful that that doesn't push us back substantially. That's a wild card, though, just in regards, so people know, I, a small project at my home, I've been on a call order since May to get concrete and I still have not got that. And so it's, the challenges are very real to companies and citizens right now, so hoping we can push through that. And then yesterday, I did, as said, had a phone call with the sheriff in regards to some, some neighbor concerns out at Lake 15. I think between the sheriff and planning and zoning department, we're doing whatever is within our power to mitigate what those concerns are. And then I also had a conference call yesterday with the Director of Community Action Minnesota and the Stearns County Public Health Director. We will be presenting on, at the Minnesota Poverty Conference next week in Duluth. Just so the boards are aware, those, those costs will be incurred on my behalf by Minnesota Community Action. We won't be, be paying that. But I'm certainly excited to give the board's perspective on poverty and racial injustice and how they all kind of coordinate or intersect, I guess, and how we can best make sure that we're communicating with our diverse populations statewide. So that does conclude my report. Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last Tuesday, I attended the Highway Tracking. Commissioner Gross did a great job of explaining that, that agenda. Just a one area, just to give an update, the North Broadway Bridge, which the city of Fargo is taking the lead on that removal plan, is scheduled to go to bid still this, this late fall. And just a reminder that Justin has secured state funding for that bridge removal. On the 13th, I participated also in the facility or substance use facility interviews that yes, the following day, I met with Lori Johnson and Darren and Joe and went through some of the fee schedules. We'll have some discussions on next Tuesday. Again, appreciate the opportunity to attend the AMC Policy Meeting in Alexandria. Last week, I did participate in a portion of the rural Minnesota counties meeting. I did think it was interesting from Commissioner Gross's comments, Ben Winchester of University of Minnesota. One of the, I guess, issues that that was brought forward is post-COVID, people are choosing to, wanting to move into the rural areas. There aren't as many homes, to which Mr. Commissioner Gross talked about. And so some of the counties were concerned about this new program of whether it conflicted with our old, old issues that we pushed forward with them, keeping people in place to keep them out of nursing homes. And now this, this program is saying, no, we need to get them out of, out of their homes and into other places. And so they were, they said there would be some additional conversations. And also just to touch base on rural counties, Don, Dan Larson, who's been the executive director, I guess for the last 25 years, has announced his retirement. And so he'll be done at the end of 2023. And so they'll be going through the transitioning to a new, new leadership for next year. I did step out for MCC JPA pre-meeting. We have a meeting later this week, discuss about some potential acquisitions and negotiations. The, I sat in on the 15th, also in the Environmental Natural, Natural Resource Policy Committee. We were fortunate to have representatives from MPCA, Bowser, DNR, the Solid Waste Administrator Association and Feed Lot Officers. I think one of the things that was interesting, and I've already talked with our solid waste manager, Corey Bang, one of the challenges that I think we've had some discussions in our SWAC meetings have been the testing of landfills for the PFOS. And one of the things that the state of Minnesota kind of came out and said that they're, they're going to work in partnership with the counties, but later in the, the presentation, they identified that the NPCA is not. They are going to be taking more of an aggressive compliance piece. And so I think that's something that will map the need to make sure that we have in our budgets identifying the cost of the well monitoring. The NPCA has already gone through Illinois and Alabama and is quite aggressive in that compliance requirements. On Friday afternoon, I came back from the conference, I did meet with Darren in regards to, they've started the second, second round of negotiations with their nine bargaining units, received updates there. On the 19th, participated in the Resource Recovery Facility, as Commissioner Mojo mentioned, lots of cement being poured. They're getting the last poured this week on their south retaining wall, which hopefully then, once that cures, we'll be able to pour the second half of the Resource Recovery floor in Area C and then we should be able to start seeing that last portion of the building, building going up. Jeannie Givens is going to be here from MPCA and, let's see, where's the date? I believe it's the 24th. And so the last time she had intended to come, this board had requested that we post that. So in the event that you wanted to, you'd have the ability to go tour the site with her. And so I would assume that you probably would want that again. So we'll, we'll include that once I confirm that date. Oh, excuse me, October 24th, 1:00 PM. And one of the things that they did talk about, as Commissioner Mojo mentioned, that the agendas are getting smaller. And so if there are significant issues, they may start looking at shifting the dates of our meetings. Normally, we meet every other week on Monday afternoon, but they may look at shifting those meetings in hopes of saving money and time of some of the representatives on, on that committee. I did receive a notification from the National Opioid Settlement. We do have to, I have to complete some final paperwork this week. The, the, under, my understanding to this point is that we are going to be receiving multiple payments through the first three to five years and we're going to receive four to five payments from now until the end of this year. My understanding is they'll range, they'll be at $67,619.78 each of those payments. And so I'm not really quite sure why they're not just going to pay them all out at one time. But I have reached out to, reached out to the opioid settlement just to get confirmation of that. Well, we've, we sent out an email yesterday. We've set our rural cities and county fall meeting for October 13th from, at 4:00 to 6:00 PM. Saban has graciously offered to host the meeting this fall and so we're going to be meeting at the Fire Hall. Kathy touched on the, on the vaccine clinics. Again, the 21st and the 28th will have clinics set there. You can go to our website to get, to set up, set up an appointment. And then also just a reminder, as been addressed, next week, we will be discussing the RFQs for construction management of the Resource Recovery Facility and also will be coming in with the preliminary, request for preliminary budget resolution for the board. With that, I conclude my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross.
Question on the solid waste. The longer it takes out there, now Moorhead must have, as long as they have to continue operating their operation, I mean, if they got their budget to continue as long as we don't get done, or, I mean, is there?
Yeah, I did, I did ask their representative yesterday if the facility was, would have any operational issues leading up to that and they indicated that they wouldn't. Good, okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Leiser, anything?
Nothing from the county attorney's office.
Okay, thank you. Colleen? All right, thank you. We are adjourned.